Good evening, and I'd like to call our Tuesday, November 20th, 2018, Pickwa City Commission Meeting to Order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda is the Oath of Office for the Pickwa Fire Department, Fire Captain Christopher James Black, if you'll come forward to the podium. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Christopher Black.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will obey the Constitution.
That I will obey the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Pickwa.
Of the City of Pickwa.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Fire Captain.
The duties of the Office of Fire Captain.
Congratulations. Thank you, and we welcome you, and I believe your family is here today, so we give thanks for your family and the ways they keep the fire burning at, well, I guess I shouldn't say "fire," so let me rephrase that. They keep things going at home. We give thanks for you allowing him to work with us and to do the good work that he does for our city. It's wonderful to have you all here tonight as well. Do we have any announcements?
Who's your dad?
Jim, sitting right here.
Okay.
Know him?
No, it's a different Jim. Huh?
I work with you.
Is this Jim out of Goodrich? I didn't recognize you. Okay.
I'm still in the van.
Please?
All right, if we have no announcements, we will move to our consent agenda then.
The consent agenda consists of one item tonight, approval of the minutes from the November 6, 2018, regular City Commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. And now we move to old business. We only have one item. It is ordinance number 15-18. It's a second reading.
An emergency ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Municipal Code Employment Policy.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This ordinance was amended at the request of the City Commission to clarify the language. It did not substantively change any of the ordinance. It did put what appeared to be the language that was not as clear in chart form rather than just leaving it in word form to clarify the purpose of the ordinance.
Okay.
Now, this is basically cut and dry. Can we eliminate the third reading on this?
Yes, you can.
I move we eliminate the third reading rule.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of eliminating the third reading say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we have done that. And now the ordinance stands before us.
I move we adopt ordinance number 15-18.
Second.
Before we do that, is there anybody in the public that wants to speak to this ordinance? Okay, if not, we have, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to our new business, and the first is ordinance number 16-18. This is a first reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Ms. Holtz Apple will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Schedule A covers the salaries of the full-time, non-union employees at the city. For 2019, we're proposing that each step be increased by 2%. This is the same percentage increase that has been given to all other employees of the city, and this may stand as the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this ordinance? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand as our first reading. And now we move to ordinance number 17-18. This is also a first reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Ms. Holtz.
Thank you. Schedule A1 covers part-time, seasonal, and temporary employees of the city. The wages for certain employees will be adjusted in accordance with the State of Ohio Minimum Wage requirements. Currently, the minimum wage is $8.30 an hour. That moves in 2019 to $8.55 an hour. Specific titles are also requested changed for next year include the harvest operator and seasonal green superintendent. Those have been added to reflect specific seasonal details.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this ordinance?
So, does that mean we won't have a greens superintendent all year long, just during the summer?
The seasonal green superintendent is scheduled for about a nine to 11-month period typically.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand as our first reading. And now we move to ordinance number 18-18. This is also a first reading.
Excuse me. An ordinance repealing existing Chapter 33.08 and enacting a new Chapter 33.08 of the Pickwa Code relating to employee insurance.
Ms. Holtz.
This ordinance updates Chapter 33.08 of the Pickwa Code to set the new benefit year for all employees' health insurance to 2019. No other changes are provided in that section.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this ordinance? Any questions or comments from our public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand on the first reading of this ordinance. And now we move to ordinance number 19-18. This is also a first reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the City of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2019.
This is the first of three readings of the appropriation ordinance for 2019. This ordinance is to be presented and passed by the end of December of each year. The Commissioners have reviewed in detail the department budgets, which was held last Tuesday, November 13.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this ordinance? Any questions or comments from our public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand as our first reading of ordinance number 19-18. And now we move to ordinance number 20-18. This is also a first reading.
An ordinance amending Section 154.025B, General Business District of the City of Pickwa Code of ordinances.
I'll call on Mr. Smesing.
Thank you. The proposed amendment will amend the B General Business Section of the zoning code to include hospitals as a principal permitted use type within the subject zoning district. Currently, the zoning code limits hospital uses to be located in only the R2 and R3 residential zoning districts. With reference to the traffic volume and use intensity typically generated by a hospital, the use type much better aligns with the purpose and intent of the B General Business zoning district. For this reason, it has been suggested that the code be amended to acknowledge the suitability of this use type within the subject zoning district. A review of the comprehensive plan and zoning code by the Planning Commission and testimony provided at a public hearing before the Planning Commission resulted in the Planning Commission finding that the request is consistent with the adopted land use policies and plans and their recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this ordinance? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand as the first reading of ordinance number 20-18. And now we move to resolution number R-142-18.
A resolution approving the purchase of part of N-Lot 43.
Mr. Smesing.
Thank you. This relates to the riverfront redevelopment strategy. This particular structure is located on a 0.15 acre tract of property known as part of N-Lot 43. The structures themselves are currently in a state of blight and not all that usable in terms of redevelopment potential, so the intent is for these structures to be demolished. This would facilitate the redevelopment of the site in support of the private sector activity we anticipate happening at some of the properties in this area. We've included in the packet a purchase agreement that's been negotiated with the property owner, and the property owner is ready to proceed with closing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt a resolution R-142-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-143-18.
A resolution approving the purchase of part of N-Lot 1.
Mr. Smesing.
Here, too, the interest in the property is related to the redevelopment of the riverfront area. The structure, in this case, is located on a 0.9 acre tract of property known as part of N-Lot 1. The structure will be demolished and assembled. The land will be assembled with other lots that have previously been purchased by the city. Again, this is in anticipation of private sector development interest and facilitating the investment that we expect will come with that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-143-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-144-18.
A resolution authorizing a one-year lease with Dream Builders Group Incorporated.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This is a request for renewal from Dream Builders Group. It is operated through the Clubhouse Program, which is out of Gingham'sburg Church. They used, beginning in December of last year, the Mo Park Building for after-school program for two purposes. One, serving children for after-school programs, but the second purpose is to develop team leaders, and the resolution indicates how many children participated in those programs. And then they were open throughout the summer for various programs for children who needed it. My understanding is there were no problems using the Mo Park Building, no interference with any city needs at that time, and it's being recommended that the renewal be granted.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? I'm noticing that it served 31 children with 2016 leaders participating as well, so those are nice numbers, something definitely needed in our community. Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution R-144-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-145-18.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate.
We'll go back to Mr. Smesing.
This time, we're selling property instead of purchasing. This comes from the adjoining property owner of the former Bennett School Site, which the city recently acquired. The property owner's requested to purchase an eight-foot wide strip of land owned by the City of Pickwa. The subject portion of the land is part of, as I mentioned, the former Bennett School tract. The property owner's intention is to be able to make driveway improvements to their property located at 611 South Main Street. It's interesting to notice that, to note that previously on land survey records, this eight-foot strip was once prior, previously part of 611 South Main Street, and had been split off and given to the school, so now it's going back to its original status. We, again, have negotiated with the property owner at the fair market value. They've completed the survey work necessary for the transaction documents to be prepared, and here again, we're ready to move forward with closing upon your authorization.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move we adopt resolution R-145-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-146-18.
A resolution authorizing amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning designation of 1130 Garvey Road being parcels N-44077662, N-44251015, N-44077664, N-4407766, N-44077668, and N-4425067 from OS Open Space to be General Business.
Mr. Smesing.
Thank you. With the recent construction activity on the east side of town, the property owner has been approached with an interest in the property, and they, too, have recognized the development potential for this site. They've asked that the property be rezoned in recognition of this development interest from the current OS zoning status to a B General Business zoning status, which would be consistent with the land use and zoning types surrounding the property. It's worth noting that the rezoning includes not only the property owned by the property owner, but also several parcels that lay underneath the I-75 highway easement. They're all OS and everything else around is B, so they're included in this request. The Planning Commission received the request, did hold a public hearing on the matter, heard from the applicant and their interest in seeing this rezoning go through, and there was no one present to speak in opposition to the request, so the Planning Commission subsequently recommended approval of this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-146-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-147-18.
An emergency resolution for consent to amend a contract with LJB Incorporated for the design of the Commercial Street Utilities Project.
Before I call on Mr. Shelley, I just want to state that the next two items, 13 and 14, are additional costs on the Commercial Street project. That we believe that these costs have been caused by Vectren, and it is my intent to pursue replacement of the funds with Vectren once we pay the, pay these accordingly. So, we will be pursuing that with Vectren in the future. Mr. Shelley.
The engineering and construction management services for the Commercial Street Utility Project are being provided by LJB Incorporated. Once construction began, our construction contractor found several gas conflicts that were not on the design plans. These included an unmarked gas line found on South Street, three unmarked gas lines found at the intersection of Roosevelt and Grant, an unmarked gas line found near the intersection of Commercial and Young Streets, and an unmarked gas line found at the intersection of Roosevelt and Young. Each of these gas conflicts created additional engineering and construction management work for LJB. Additional drawings had to be produced for two of the conflicts, and a senior member of LJB's staff had to visit the site for data gathering purposes. LJB has requested an additional $5,000 be added to their contract, 1,000 of which is a contingency in case we find future conflicts. The additional monies will pay for the design and construction management services that these gas conflicts created. I would add on what Gary put into the record. My contract with Vectren has told us that LJB went through the proper channels when requesting gas line locations during the design phase. Vectren, however, was in the middle of a procedure change in how they managed those requests, and LJB's were not processed appropriately, and that's how we've gotten to this point. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions or comments from the Commission?
No, they've done work on these, on Commercial Street over the last couple of years with the paving and everything. Why did these lines turn up? Didn't, weren't they marked before at all?
That's correct. They weren't marked. Vectren was supposed to provide those markings and failed to do so.
Okay, now, we've done the sewer line, the storm sewer line down that road, right?
Correct. That's part of that, yes.
And we run into their gas lines.
We found those gas lines as we were doing the construction, which caused us both design and construction additional costs.
Now, has Vectren, in the meantime, have they redone those lines?
I think most of them they have, if I'm not mistaken.
They are done.
They are done, okay.
They finished yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we won't have to worry about Vectren digging us up again after we get it done.
That should be the case.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Let me ask a question real quick. Does Vectren, did Vectren admit to you at all or to anybody at all that they were having this conflict when they were changing the process?
Well, we found out that during the construction, as we contacted Vectren, that through our consultant, that they didn't, they didn't mark the lines. They didn't identify them properly, right. I don't think even Vectren knew they were there, quite honestly.
And they was getting the money, though, weren't they?
Oh, somebody was, yeah.
So, are we gonna have to sue them or?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna pursue it, and we have a good working relationship with Vectren. I would hope that they understand that these should not be costs that the city has to incur for their mistake.
Just temporarily.
We do what we have to do.
That's right. Okay.
This is listed as an emergency resolution, so I would need a motion. Actually, I guess I don't need a motion for that, because it's, yeah, because it's not an ordinance.
I move to adopt resolution R-147-18.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-148-18.
An emergency resolution for consent to add a change order to the contract with Milcon Concrete Incorporated for the construction of the Commercial Street Utilities Project.
This is for the construction part. Mr. Shelley.
Thank you. Milcon is our contractor on this job, and they have requested an additional $51,832 in order to complete the work. Much of that money has to do with the gas conflicts that we just discussed. I have quite a list of change orders. I don't really need to go through those unless you want me to. Suffice it to say, we're in the process of going through these change orders with our construction management team. Once Milcon is back on site, they'll do this work, and we request this money in order to pay them in full. I would like to say that, you may have noticed, work has stopped along Commercial Street. We have had a two-and-a-half week stop because we were waiting for Vectren to move these gas lines. So, part of this change order is a demobilization and a remobilization fee. Milcon had to move their equipment off to attend to other work. I'm told that they're gonna be back on site on the 26th of November with an anticipated project completion of December 15th.
And as you said earlier, we're going to look at Vectren for...
Absolutely. Any costs associated with this, yes.
So, how much of this $51,000 are we going to ask for from Vectren?
$51,000.
Okay. Hope my gas bill don't go up.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution?
Yeah, I have a question on Section 3. The last line, it says, "The reason that the Shawnee Neighborhood Storm Sewer Phase 1 Project has already been approved and completed." How does that pertain to the Commercial Street Project?
That doesn't. That, that has been changed. I'm not sure how that made it into the agenda.
It has nothing to do with this.
No.
I said, "I didn't think so," but it's like, it's on there, so it's a check.
Any other questions?
Can we take that out?
Yeah, you're gonna have to amend it, because this is what's before you to approve, so you can't... Sky, do you have the correct version with you?
No, the correct version is on the server. I changed it after our meeting last week.
Well, I think all you have to do is eliminate from, after the City of Pickwa, eliminate the rest of the sentence. Resolution is being, is declared an emergency for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety in the City of Pickwa.
Period.
Yeah, well, I think you always have to add the reason, because public peace, health, and safety is too broad, so I think you would say, "For said reason that the Commercial Street Project is already under construction."
Right.
Okay, so I make a motion that we amend it exactly how our law director just said.
Second.
So, Section 3 would read, "This resolution is declared an emergency for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety in the City of Pickwa for said reason that the Commercial Street Project is already under construction."
Okay. All right, and you seconded that, John?
Yep.
All in favor of the amended resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution stands as amended before us. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this amended resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-148-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-149-18.
A resolution appointing a member to the Miami County Community Action Council Board to fill an unexpired term.
This resolution simply appoints Janelle Ranley as our appointee to the Miami County Community Action Council Board.
Any questions or comments from the Commission? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution R-149-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Good evening. My name's Bill Jacquo. I live at 607 for Sunset Drive. I thought, I was just, every time I come into the City of Pickwa, I look at that overpass, and I think, what an improvement, and just how nice it looks, and I know it was a lot of money and a lot of wrangling, and, boy, I think it was really worth it. And then, then it causes me to kind of go back seven, eight years ago, and when we were having troubles with our city manager, and we had an interim manager, and we had recalls... recalls to city commission, and a lot of turmoil and things of that sort, and so through sort of two waves of city commissioners and a new city manager, I'd just like to say, I think you guys have done a great job. Gary, I think you've done a fine job. I think most people should be very thankful that the city's in the position that it's in right now, and looks great for the future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your praise.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Thank you. I made just a few comments, and then we're gonna have Chris Bezing share with you some economic development updates. But first, I hope for some good news for everyone, is East Ash Street will be open by tomorrow night. That work is being stopped for the winter, there's still work to be done, but the lanes should be open, and they'll be back to work in the spring. That's, ODOT is, this is an ODOT project, and they've decided to halt it for the winter. Along those same lines, the State Route 66 Bridge, which was emergency work that was being done by ODOT, will also be open on Friday, and there's additional work they will do, but that will also occur in the spring. And finally, pertaining to streets, the roundabout should be open by midweek of next week, so we should have all those things open. Just a reminder that offices are closed Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. And with that, I'm gonna call on Chris to give us an update on economic development.
Thank you. So, what I have for you this evening is a PowerPoint presentation, and just some information about the things that are happening in the Development Department, the ongoing activity as it relates to the many things happening in our community, and the many positive things we see trending in our community, just to give you some understanding of where we're at with these things. So, if we could cue the PowerPoint from the back room.
That's a good start.
Shake this up and squirt it on you. It's better than beer. Should have was better than beer.
So, throughout this presentation, you'll hear me make reference to placemaking. This is because at the core of everything we do, we are creating place. Just to give you some understanding, at its most basic level, placemaking is making livable places by thinking through the design of places and how they relate to one another, the experiences that place make possible, and the consequences place have on how we live our lives. So, that gives you a little context for some of the thinking on the things that we do and the things we work on each and every day. In 2005, we established the Development Department to conduct the planning and community and economic development activities vital to the community. And from that point forward, we began to very intentionally engage citizens, businesses, community leaders, and stakeholders from all segments of the community to plan for the future of Pickwa. In 2007, we updated the comprehensive plan, completing the Planet Pickwa document, and this was the first comprehensive plan update since 1972. The findings of the Planet Pickwa Comp Plan have provided a foundation for the work that lied ahead at the time and continues to lie ahead, and has acted as a springboard for the succession of over 20 planning documents that have identified and prioritized the needs of our community and helped us to prioritize where to invest our time, energy, and resources. Each of these planning documents produced through this process identify projects intended to lift up the quality of place and quality of life that defines the image and vitality of our community. So, it was Fred Kent from the Project for Public Spaces who summed it up this way. He said, "Placemaking is about turning a neighborhood, town, or city from a place you can't wait to get through into one that you never want to leave." So, as we think about the activities that happen from our office on a day-to-day basis, much of our community development work focuses on securing funding sources and managing programs that aim to implement the recommendations of the previously referenced planning documents. And to date, we have secured over $1 million for the Downtown Riverfront Placemaking Initiative in particular. On the commercial side, as it relates to public sector activity, we currently have four building owners that have received nearly $23,000 in grants and $46,000 in loans to complete updates and repairs and facade improvements to their buildings through the Downtown Revitalization Program. We have eight additional building owners that are currently in the queue and have projects out for bid, so we're very excited to see these funds that we've secured through the Community Development Block Grant Program being utilized. Previously, we've completed critical infrastructure projects using the Block Grant Program, including the Automated Reader Technology Implementation, and of course, the Shawnee Storm Sewer Project. We also administer and manage programs that provide funding sources for businesses to start or grow, including our Micro Enterprise Loan Program. To date, we've had six small businesses utilize the loan program to the tune of almost $70,000. Likewise, with our USDA Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, we've had four small businesses utilize this program, taking advantage of $150,000 in funding to accomplish their goals. On the residential side, we have the Community Housing Impact Preservation Program. We currently have 13 projects, or we have completed 13 projects totaling near $115,000 in residential property rehab or repairs. And you can see the photo there, just a snapshot of what a difference it makes in terms of the before and after, when folks have resources to be able to do some very basic property maintenance needs on their property. We do a lot of other things in the community development sector as well. We essentially serve as a clearinghouse for information related to available resources for both the commercial and residential property owners in our community. And this is, as with all the programs we administer, relates to sustaining and fostering a strong sense of quality of place in our community. And this is so important, as noted by Carol Coletta of Art Place, "Quality of place is a deep driver of talent and where it settles. You cannot separate the two. Talent and quality of place go hand in hand." So, as we think about attracting workforce, and attracting millennials, and attracting our youth back to the community, I think that's a very relevant quote. Sorry, I'm behind on a slide here. So, in many cases, the public sector investment serves to drive private sector investment. In the past five years alone, we have seen over $65 million of private sector investment in both residential and commercial development activity. If you add the public school projects into that number, it would be well over $100 million. And this does not include the figures that you see in 2014 as it relates to the water treatment plant. Factor all those in, and you're north of $150,000. In those instances of disinvestment, we encourage property owners to comply with adopted minimum property maintenance standards. Since June of 2016, we have opened 874 property maintenance cases. 608 of those cases have been voluntarily resolved. We have 266 cases that remain open, and of those 266, 42 of them have received their initial notice, the first notice, so they're still, have the opportunity to take care of things that need to be addressed. But unfortunately, we have 185 who did not respond to the first notice and received a second notice, and 29 who didn't respond to the first or second notice and have received a final notice, which basically says that we do need you to take action and address these matters, or there could be consequences such as going to court. And we have 10 cases that are currently in the court, in front of the court. These things, again, are critical in terms of the quality of place in our community and making sure that we do those things necessary to maintain our properties to at least a minimum level as it relates to the quality of place, the investment in our neighborhoods, and our property values, and things of this nature. So, on the economic development front, I'm sorry, I'm behind on slides again. On the economic development front, we continue to focus on implementing the recommendations and strategies in both our strategic planning document and also in the economic development strategy that we completed a couple of years ago. We focus a significant amount of time, energy, and effort on retention and expansion, getting out and visiting with our employers, and working with the existing companies to understand the challenges and opportunities they face, and making sure that we can connect them with the resource partners that are available to assist them when they have needs. The continued growth and success of our local businesses, many of whom have been in our community for over 50, 70, or 100 years, is a top priority in the work that we do every day. We do also engage in business attraction. We develop and follow up on leads that come through a variety of sources, both small and large. We meet with site selectors, and we prepare for those opportunities. And frankly, the last bullet, in many instances, we have a lot of work to do to prepare sites and/or have the options on property if we're to be competitive when those opportunities present themselves. We do fortunately, however, realize successes in this area. Kettering Health Network, as you know, will be building a new building at US 36 in Looney Road in the very near future, and I would invite all of you to join myself and most other city staff that will be in attendance at the December 10th, 1:30 PM groundbreaking ceremony. They're looking forward to having as many guests as possible, and we'd like to see everyone in the community there. We also focus a considerable amount of effort in staying engaged with our workforce development partners. We work to align the needs of the local business community with the region's workforce development resources. So, Edison State Community College does a terrific job with their Edison State Works Program, the more recently announced Robinson Career Center, improvements that will be built, Upper Valley Career Center and their apprentice program and their adult ed programming, and the Pickwa City School District and their Success Bound Program that they've been putting together and executing are all great examples of how our resource partners are doing the things necessary to make sure that we continue to grow, sustain, and train up our workforce in the community and/or attract the workforce necessary for our businesses. In that same spirit, we continually focus on engaging our strategic partners and resource partners to make sure we're aware of the services they have to offer. We focus on doing the many things necessary to provide the resources necessary to make Pickwa a place where entrepreneurs can grow ideas into businesses, startups can flourish, and existing new businesses can grow and be prosperous. We stay in close contact with local and regional resource partners so that when a local business has a need, we can connect them with the resource partner that can provide the necessary assistance. So, finally here, we believe that given the opportunity, people will choose to live where there is a sense of community pride, a strong sense of place, and a place that is willing to continue to reinvest in itself. And it was Rich Carlgaard from Forbes who said, "The most valuable resources in the 21st century is brains. Smart people tend to be mobile. Watch where they go, because where they go, robust economic activity will follow." And again, that very much relates to the placemaking work that we're doing and the efforts that we put into community and economic development and the planning that supports that each and every day. So, here's our team, and I thank you for your time and attention, and we very much appreciate your interest and support in the things that we do.
Thanks, Chris. I just want to mention that I think the efforts over the past few years on our economic development strategy are very much starting to pay off, and I think we're seeing some very good results as a result of that, so be happy to answer any questions for you.
Where are we at hiring a economic development, or development director?
The applications just closed on the 19th, which was yesterday, and we were starting the review of the applications.
Were there a lot?
I think we ended up with 11 or 12.
Okay. The branding, quality of place, quality of life, is that something we are going with? I like it, I'm stoned.
Yeah, that's part of our whole economic development strategy and tagline and everything, so that was developed, you know, back a few years ago as we began moving into the placemaking initiatives and so forth, so that's all part of it, yes.
Well, it hits the spot. Can you put the PowerPoint, is it gonna go on the city website?
We certainly can, yeah.
Put it on the website, link, put it on your LinkedIn? I want, I follow your LinkedIn every day, I do, I just look, because you've got a lot of good pictures of Pickwa and the things that you're involved in, and I appreciate the high-level activity that you yourself do, and if you put it on there, a lot of people will see it.
Well, just to give you an example, some of the things we're putting on LinkedIn from my LinkedIn place, we're getting as many as over 5,000 reviews.
I believe, I look at it every day.
At a time, so it's pretty incredible. So, we're getting the word out very much about Pickwa.
Yeah.
And I think it's starting to pay dividends on how people view Pickwa, you know, and I like to remind everyone that a few years ago, in the branding effort that Pickwa, you know, people that lived here and said that Pickwa was the armpit of the county.
Butt of the county, yeah.
I don't think you can say that anymore.
No.
And I think that things have changed immensely, and we're moving down the right path, and I think the best years are yet to come for us.
Wow. Appreciate all your efforts, I really do.
Anything else? That was a great presentation, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
A lot of good stuff going on, a lot of moving in the right direction, and the vision is definitely there, and it's nice to see things start to fall in place, so.
You can't always see the activity, but there is a lot of activity happening, and things are progressing in the right direction.
Yeah, great, good, good, good. Anything else from the, questions from the commission for the city manager's report? If not, we will move to commissioners' comments. Commissioner Lee, you want to start?
Sure. I want to thank Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity for allowing me to come to their yearly scholarship drive. They offer a $1,000 scholarship to students from Pickwa City, Troy, and Lima. I got to network with some, the mayor of Sydney, the city commissioner from Troy, the chief of staff of Lima, and great people, and then I met some very good students, the Pickwa recipient, did, has a great GPA, is a good kid, plays football, very, very, very good representative of Pickwa, and it was a good event, I had a good time. Presented their keynote speaker with the key to the city. His name was Brother Jones, he was their chief financial officer for the area, and he, great guy, told a great story, and it's just nice to have that as a resource for students in Pickwa, so appreciated going to that. Basketball season's starting, so things are gonna get busy here for me. I want everybody to have a great Thanksgiving, don't eat too much. I hope the Cowboys lose. I'm an Eagles fan, what can I say? And I do believe in what Chris said, that the city is, and what the city manager said, the city's going in the right direction, in the great direction. A lot of stuff is not being seen, and that's why this update is very important, and as many people can see the update and know the things that are going on, will be important. And I appreciate all the work behind the scenes that's not being seen or even appreciated. I appreciate it, I'm letting you know, so. And the comments, well, it is being seen by some people, because Bill came up and gave a very favorable review of the commission, the city manager, and the city, and stuff like that is very much appreciated, so thank you, thank you very much. And other than that, I've got nothing else to say.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Short?
Two things. First off, Happy Thanksgiving's coming up, obviously, everybody have, enjoy yourself with your family, and have a great meal, and enjoy the fellowship. Also, I feel a little remiss in the fact that I forgot, I neglected the Veterans Day in our last commission meeting, it was right after that, so I just want to thank all the veterans that are in the City of Pickwa and also that work for the city. We have quite a few wonderful, or people that are not only police department, but fire department and different city departments that represent military, so I want to thank them, and that's it. them, and that's it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vogt?
I'd like to congratulate Captain Black.
Yeah.
On his promotion. I was sitting here looking at him, and I recognized him. He looks sort of like his grandfather. I didn't recognize his dad, and I worked with his dad for 20 years. So, kids grow up, don't they?
I guess the adults do too, huh?
No, they don't grow up. They just get old.
There you go.
Okay. But I'm sure I know the family, and he will do us a great job. Congratulations, Jim Black. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
I want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. And one of the things that I've seen, been seeing a lot on Facebook is about people driving past school buses. So, do me a favor, see a school bus, it's got to stop, sign out, stop. Very simple thing to do. I don't want to see any accidents happen in Pickwa like has happened in some other communities where children have got killed because they were walking across the street and somebody wasn't paying attention to the school bus and hit the kids. So, and that's it.
Thank you. I also want to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving as well. It's hard to believe we are at the end of November. I am not sure where October and November went, but we are knocking on the door of the holiday season. And with that in mind, you do not need to look very far in our community to find holiday activities between the school. I know the senior breakfast is coming up, Christmas on the Green, we've got the Christmas Parade, we've got a variety of things. There is a lot happening in our community, so I encourage you to check out the community calendar, Facebook, social media, the paper, a variety of places you can find out the activities that are happening. So, it is the holiday season, and with that, I want you to remind you, when you shop, please shop local, because as you shop local, you are supporting your neighbors, you are supporting your community, and there, you know, we have such a wonderful variety of places to shop within our downtown area, especially in other parts of our community that are all our neighbors. So, I encourage you that when you go out to buy your gifts this year, to do so locally. And that is all I have. As we now, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will be doing our city manager's annual review, so I have a motion to do that.
I move to go to city to executive session.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sherrod.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Okay, we are moving to executive session. Thank you.